and tribulations of the Leominster School Committee. And before I get to my special guest here, let's, for those of you who didn't want to sit through or watch the two-hour-and-20-minute Leominster School Committee meeting that happened on November 20 of 2017, I have the Cliff's Notes version here for you. So please bear with me. We'll do a nice four-minute summary of what happened in the meeting. Well, first of all, you had a cordial beginning of the meeting. It seemed pretty routine. And then this was the first meeting for the interim superintendent Paula Deacon, and also the newly-elected school committee members were in the audience for this new incoming term. So about an hour in, the first line-item budget that had been produced in several years came out of the committee. And so, great start. Boy, this looks like a nice meeting. But ironically enough, an hour and 24 minutes in, here comes the fun. Committee member Nona Ojala brings a motion, which isn't on the agenda, by the way, to dissolve the Finance Committee, where she says, among other things, "Mr. Mayor, stop attacking us." An hour and 35 minutes in, member Wendy Anderson, using her favorite word, "bully," to describe the mayor. An hour and 37 in, member Ronnie Hool, with random quotes from the movie Cool Hand Luke, describing meetings with members who weren't in office at the time that he claimed such meetings were held. Needless to say, we're going a little bit off the rails here. All right, an hour and 45 minutes in, animosity grows, talks by the committee of the mayor blindsiding them. An hour and 50 minutes in, member Suzanne Kohler, who's been on the committee for 25-ish-or-so years, tries to dial things back. Hour and 53 minutes in, Mayor Mazzarella indicates that they shouldn't vote on this Finance Committee dissolution motion that Ms. Ojala brought, because it's not on the agenda, and they could be in violation of open-meeting laws. Committee member Heather Mazafaro responds curtly, "We spoke with Mass Association of School Committees beforehand to check and make sure that it was okay to do this." Hour and 58 minutes in, motion to dissolve Finance Committee narrowly passes with five votes in favor: Ms. Mazafaro, Ms. Ojala, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Hool, and Mr. Casey. And then, two hours, five minutes in, 15 minutes before the end of the meeting, the hammer drops from school committee member Heather Mazafaro. She moves to censure the mayor. So let's go to the video.
So first, I want to say that I absolutely 100% agree with the audit. What I think should happen is that it shouldn't be your auditor. I think it should be an outside auditor, maybe Masbo, that is looking for this comprehensive audit. You know, we've repeatedly asked you not to disparage us on social media and through the newspaper, and although you wrote this letter to, which you did tell us about, that you were going to do, yep, I gotcha, you know, in your own way, you did throw us under the bus. No, you did. And in articles that you speak in the newspaper, you throw us under the bus. So on one hand, you're saying, you know, "Leominster strong, let's walk together, you know, we need to be working collaboratively." But then you do these things, these types of newspaper articles and things that we don't know about, and it just divides us more. And it makes us feel like a fractured committee.
Well, we're not a fractured committee.
We are. Yeah. Well, you're the leader.
I'm the leader, but I can't be responsible for everybody's actions, like, "Let's sanction the mayor." I mean...
Okay, two hours, eight minutes in. When Ms. Mazafaro looks for a second of the motion, committee member Cody Casey offers his support of Mazafaro's motion. So let's go back to the video to hear what Mr. Casey...
I'd like to say something. Look, I think there's a lot of people in the community who are going to be confused and are going to ask themselves, "Isn't this just going to divide us further?" So I want to make explicitly clear, you know, why we're doing this. You know, our school committee protocol states, and I quote, "The chair shall be the public spokesperson for the committee, except as these responsibilities are specifically designated to others. Furthermore, our protocol states that we recognize the importance of proactive communication, and above all, it says we will respect our fellow members." I feel like we get two different chairs with you, Mr. Mayor. I really...
So a subtle thing that my friend, Mr. Cormier, pointed out to me, when Mr. Casey goes to second the motion, Wendy Anderson also does it sort of at the same time, and she gleefully replies, "I beat you to it." Well, I'm glad she's having such fun with such a serious topic. But anyway, the motion to censure passes, same five votes in favor. Ms. Anderson uses the word "bully" three or four more times for good measure, and then we adjourn. Great. So the gentleman who first spoke in favor of Ms. Mazafaro's motion to censure joins me here today. Cody Casey, what happened?
Well, first of all, let me say thank you so much for having me on. I'm a big fan of Flap. So let me start with this. You know, I wasn't expecting the mo... Let me put it this way. I guess I wasn't too surprised at the motion. You know, the mayor, in the previous week, had once again gone to the paper and said that, you know, pretty much the committee had made a mess of things, and that only a couple of committee members, you know, actually contributed to the process of trying to solve the solution. Now, this is really just the tip of the iceberg. I was six months into my first, you know, really budget process on the school committee in my first year, and the mayor decided that he would go on his TV show and attack myself and Heather Mazafaro. At that point, I tried to bring up at a meeting, you know, that this is a violation of our protocols. And you may wonder, why do protocols matter? It seems kind of ridiculous and, you know, petty. But it matters so much, because it really speaks to how we function as a governing body. But, you know, in the years to come, you know, he kept attacking members in the paper, some specific, sometimes the committee as a whole. And, you know, I had talked to other members in the past, particularly earlier that summer, as the budget crisis was hitting its peak, because the mayor was going to the paper, primarily in June, you know, weekly. And he was saying, you know, "This isn't on him, this is on us. You know, we can talk about this later, but personally, I think we all have a role to play in the responsibility." But essentially, I was beyond frustrated. In the summer, I started writing up Word documents that would, you know, pretty much call for a vote of no confidence, because I was at a level of frustration that I really didn't think I could get to. I was disillusioned, and I felt like our leader had us under constant siege, and I just didn't think we could work as a committee properly that way. So it was as early as June of this year that I started considering a vote of no confidence. And I started writing things out. You know, I'm a notorious note taker. I try to write down everything I say in the meetings, because I'm really, you know, I'm someone who really puts value on words. I know a lot of people don't these days, but, you know, it's something that's really important to me, to say, you know, exactly what I mean and in a proper way. So when we got to that meeting, and Heather made the motion, you know, in one way, I was surprised, because the mayor had said earlier in that meeting that he wasn't going to seek the position of chair in the upcoming term, which is something I appreciated. You know, I think a lot of voters had issue with that, and he knew, a lot of us on the committee did as well, not only with the fact that, you know, we felt attacked, but also that, you know, a lot of us feel that it's an inherent conflict of interests to have the mayor as chair. So I was surprised to some extent, but, you know, when she did call for the vote, I felt like it was warranted. And I know a lot of people disagree with that. I can say at this point that I regret voting for it. It became a distraction, you know, as Barack Obama calls the politics of distraction, and it really has dominated. And the point really was just to say, "Look, you're our leader. We need you to stand behind us. We need you to speak for us." But that simply wasn't what was happening.
Backing up a little bit, the motion to dissolve the Finance Committee, because what we ended up with were two motions. Both of them were, I mean, both, you know, one of them could have been read as a shot against one of the, you know, senior committee members who was the chair of the Finance Committee.
Right. And if I could just say real quick, you know, I think Kristin Hewlett has done an amazing job as Chair of Finance, and, you know, my vote in favor of the notion to dissolve Finance really, really wasn't intended to be a shot at her. She's put in endless hours, and she deserves all the credit in the world for that.
But you had that motion, you had the motion to censure the mayor, which obviously was directed at the mayor. Both those were non-agenda items, okay?
Right.
Let's back up a little bit to the motion. Was that motion to dissolve the Finance Committee something that was discussed amongst school committee members prior to that meeting?
Well, I had talked to both Heather Mazafaro and Nona Ojala separately, you know, months before this motion was actually made, about the idea of it. You know, they approached me, "What do you think about this idea?" And right off the bat, I said, you know, "I think this is a good idea. I think this is something, you know, that we should do." You know, as I said in the meeting, I don't think it's fair that Finance has to spend six-hour meetings every week in subcommittee trying to solve these issues. And on top of that, after the budget crisis of this last year, I really felt that it was time that the committee as a whole be part of the discussion.
And so there were some discussions, sort of one-to-one or two-to-one discussions about possibly doing this. So when Heather Mazafaro says she checked with the, she checked with the Association of School Committees, were you aware that she had done that?
Was that for the vote to dissolve Finance?
Yeah, at one point, yeah, that was the motion.
I had no idea that they had reached out on that.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, that was one of the things where, you know, that's something where, you know, the mayor brought up the concern, and I think it might have been brought up, I'm trying to remember, by one or two of the other members, about the fact that, you know, it may be a violation of the open-meeting laws. What is your opinion on that?
Look, I don't think we broke the open-meeting law, but I do think that we could have been more careful, for sure. I mean, obviously, if I had known they were going to bring the votes forward, I would have, you know, mentioned that to them.
So although you discussed it, you didn't know that Ms. Ojala was going to bring that motion that meeting?
Oh, no, because we had discussed it months before. This is something she's been thinking about for a long time.
Yeah. And, I mean, and obviously, the timing, you know, the sort of, kind of the close-out meeting, interim superintendent there, the so-called, quote-unquote, "new superintendent" there, you know, new members in the audience, newly-elected members in the audience, kind of a lame-duck session. I don't think that timing is lost on anyone, you know?
Right, right. It's true. I mean, like I said, I don't know what warranted Nona to bring up her vote, but I do obviously know what warranted Heather to bring up hers, based on the fact that, you know, in the paper just a few days before, the mayor had attacked us again.
Right. And then we can go to the censure motion in a second, but just one other question on the Finance vote. But you do, even in retrospect and looking back, so you do support, you know, you are, you don't regret your vote to dissolve the Finance Committee? That's a vote that you believe still?
I do not. No.
Okay. And that's fair.
And, you know, since then, I've joined the Finance Subcommittee. I guess I just want to be at the forefront of, you know, making sure we don't end up in a crisis again. But, you know, if a vote were to come up again, to bring it to a committee as a whole, my vote would be the same.
Okay, all right. And then, so now we'll go to the motion to censure, and you were starting to discuss, and so what you felt was the reasoning behind this. And so, did you know that she was going to bring that motion that meeting?
I mean, like I said, I wasn't enormously surprised. She didn't reach out to me and say, "I'm bringing this vote forward, you know, can I have your support on it?" But, you know, the second she did, you know, having worked with these committee members for two years, everybody's in it for good reasons, but we have some fundamental disagreements between committee members. And when you get to know these people, you know, like I hope any committee member would, then you kind of know which way the vote's going to go as soon as it's brought up, especially something that, you know, partisan, I suppose.
I mean, the comment that struck me, you know, is the clip we played, you know, you're seconding the motion, you were saying, "Well, you know, here's why we're doing this," or something like that. So are you saying that that was just sort of off the cuff? Because you didn't know it was, you didn't know for sure it was coming?
Well, that's a totally fair question. Actually, as I went back a couple days afterwards and watched the meeting on Leominster Access, and was pretty horrified at how it appeared. I mean, I have, I can't blame people for thinking that it was pre-planned. That's how it looks. But at the same time, I've had those documents in my computer since June. I have felt this way for a long time. It took a couple clicks to bring up the quotes and what I wanted to say in terms of, you know, the censure. Of course, I was preparing at that time for a vote of no confidence, but it's not too hard to change the word "to censure."
Right, right. So, and I don't want to put words in your mouth or ask you leading questions, but I mean, so essentially, what you're saying is, look, you had these thoughts, so to speak, you wrote them down, you memorialized them, so it's almost like, are you just saying, are you saying that in essence what happened is that when Ms. Mazafaro did that, she kind of took the words right out of your mouth, so to speak?
I don't know if that's what I would say exactly, but I was ready for a vote of no confidence, which obviously turned out to be a censure, which, you know, through parliamentary procedure actually makes more sense. Really, it's just a slap on the wrist. And, again, it was, I wouldn't have voted for it if I did not feel like it was a last desperate act in order to try and, you know, bring attention to the issue that we aren't functioning well as a governing body.
Now, I mean, for the record, I believe this has been since withdrawn. This was withdrawn at a subsequent meeting. Okay. So the clip we saw of this particular November meeting, that's where it got contentious, but, and so while we still may end up with a dissolution of the Finance Committee, we're going to, this censure is essentially withdrawn. Have you, have you heard, have you heard anything from the Attorney General's office or any of these agencies responsible for enforcing open-meeting laws?
I have not. Nope.
Okay. Because, you know, it was said on the record, it was said in the committee meeting.
I've made perfectly clear, you know, I have no problem with this going before the Attorney General. In fact, you know, it could be a good thing in order to try and, you know, give some definiteness to what happened. And, you know, if we did do something wrong, then I would own it. But genuinely, I don't believe we did.
Okay. So now, the bigger problem and the bigger picture, because, you know, censure motions, you know, censure efforts may have been withdrawn, or, you know, varies, and the school committee member who brought that motion isn't on the, isn't on the committee anymore. I mean, so she did not seek reelection. With that said, we still have the issues. The issues don't go away, okay? There are some of the people who are in sharp disagreement with the policies that have been put forward, and sort of the spending policies, the budgetary policies, and some people who are still in much disagreement with how the mayor has run things are still there, including yourself. While it may not seem this way, because this is only your second term going in, you are essentially a veteran of the school committee, because quite honestly...
We have a lot of new members.
You got some new members there. And they're going to be looking to you for guidance, okay? And it's not like Nona, like Nona Ojala's not been on there forever, you know what I mean?
Right.
And you don't have a lot of, you don't have a lot of long-timers there. You really only have, you have two, depending on how, what you call a long timer, possibly three long-timers, okay? And so people are looking to you. What, this upcoming term, what do you, Cody Casey, do to help make things better? Understanding other people have to do their part, what's your contribution?
All right. Well, that's a big question. First of all, I think that we need a serious focus on the negotiations that are going to be taking place this year. I am on the negotiations committee, subcommittee, rather, and, you know, it's going to play an essential part of our budget in the next couple of years. And it's not going to be tough. I'm sorry, it's going to be tough. You know, everybody thinks our teachers and our administrators deserve a raise, me amongst the front of them. But at the same time, we have to recognize our economic realities at this point. A year before I took office was the last time negotiations were occurring. And that's, those step raises is what led to about $2 million of our deficit last year. So we need to be extremely vigilant moving forward, not only with negotiations, but with the budget on a whole. We need to find where we can cut. We need to find, you know, where we can save money in any way. And I commend our superintendent Paula Deacon, because she's really taking, you know, initiative on this. And we're going to save every penny we can and try and come up with a fair deal with our employees in the district. And I think that needs to be a priority. Personally, I would like to focus on creating a bigger system of transparency in the school committee. You know, I'm the guy in the background constantly nagging them to put things online, to, you know, use the phone systems, to reach out to the public more. Because I think a big issue we had last year, and, you know, it wasn't for great circumstances, but I was thrilled to see so much of the public engaged. But nobody really knew what was going on. And that includes even members of the committee amongst us. We deserve, owe the public, you know, a better understanding of the process, to give them numbers by, you know, focusing on generating another line-item budget, which is extraordinarily important. And I'm going to work hard to make sure that the public is, you know, kept in the loop, that those who want to engage can engage and can get the information that they want.
The line-item budget certainly helps. I mean, people can relate more to the numbers when they're presented like that. A note on interim superintendent Paula Deacon, she seems to be one of these folks who enjoys support from various different, various camps in the city of Leominster.
That is true.
You know, pro, you know, people who are on the side of, you know, the mayor, people on the side of the school committee, people who don't have a side, and they seem to, she seems to be very popular. Now, it's been suggested that there can be some complications whenever it talks, whenever it's about, you know, an interim is considered for the permanent position. There's been, you know, former city councillors who have spoken on that issue. And so what is your take on it? I mean...
I guess it doesn't really particularly bother me, I suppose, to support the idea of an interim becoming, you know, an official superintendent. You know, just for full disclosure, tonight, I speak only for myself and not the committee as a whole.
Right.
But, you know, I think...
We're not holding a meeting here.
We're not. I think Paula's doing a great job so far. And I think that, you know, an interim period really gives us an idea of how she would operate as superintendent. And, you know, I just don't feel comfortable saying, "No, there's no way that, you know, you could move forward as superintendent, especially if she's doing an excellent job."
Yeah, okay. And so, yeah, and I mean, she seems to have a good handle on things. She seems to be, you know, like I said, very, very popular from a number of different folks. I've talked to different folks who don't, you know, you know, people like yourself, you know, other people involved in Leominster, and people that don't agree on much, they all seem to, almost unanimously, support her. So that's a good thing. It's good to have some unity.
Exactly.
And speaking of unity, despite the mayor not being the chair of the school committee anymore, mayor is still a member of the school committee. That's not going to change.
Yes, and I think he should be.
And due to the nature of the City of Leominster Charter, the monetary allocation process, the budgetary process, in terms of what's going to, what the schools are going to get for money, well, that process isn't going to change a whole lot either. So, you know, what are some things, things realistically, that, you know, and again, I mean, you know, I made light of it in my little introduction there, to try to not use one-liners or metaphors to describe the mayor or whatever, but really substantively speaking, you know, if you had to say, you know, what are, like, you know, one or two things that the mayor can improve, not... Let's limit it this way. Rather than to say, "Stop doing this," or "Don't do that," what should he do?
I'd like to see him reach out to the members more on the committee. You know, the only time we really hear from him outside of committee meetings is when it's through the paper, and it's not normally good. You know, we want to bring people together, and I think that the mayor is fully capable of that. You know, he has a long history in this city. He's worked with a lot of people. We need unity, more than anything. And you did mention he has a spot on the committee, which I think is, you know, absolutely right. It's per the charter as well. We are the biggest, you know, budgetary portion of the city budget, so it makes sense to have the mayor on there. At the same time, I think having a new leader is really going to help us, you know, move forward in a way that, you know, the committee can really keep its goals focused on what matters, which is the students.
Yep. And so have you sought to approach the mayor on these suggestions?
Well, we've had, we've had meetings hosted by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, really workshops, and they're supposed to kind of come in, and we're supposed to go over procedures and, you know, kind of bring out into the open what's bothering us. Unfortunately, you know, at least in my opinion, in the last meeting, not too much was accomplished. I have, you know, reached out to the mayor, and when it has come to him, you know, saying things about us in the paper, but quite frankly, I just, I haven't feel like he's, I don't think I'm someone he necessarily wants to talk to. And it's unfortunate. I hate this idea, and it's throughout the whole city of Leominster now, that you're on one side or the other. You're pro dean, or you're anti-dean. I reject that notion. It doesn't have to be that way. We can come together. We just need to find some civility and common ground and respect for each other.
You may be closer than you think. Well, let's think positive.
I hope so.
And let's take, let's take what he said at face value. I'm not saying what he says is gospel, that, you know, maybe we get back to that time where you had Christmas parties and whatnot, and maybe there is a time like that that comes again. Cody Casey, thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael.
Our time is up, and, but thanks for joining us on the show.
Thanks so much for having me.
And you'll be on a regular Flap TV episode very shortly, I understand.
Yes, yes.
We'll look for you then.
All right.
Thanks again.
Take care.